It's time to call our October work session. Uh, we have quite a few things to determine, uh, so just be patient with us as we move through them. And without further ado, if you still want to go ahead and get started, um, under old business, we'll start with item number one that has the city manager and the planning department assigned to it. Paul? Thank you Rebecca. Rebecca Peter, will you make the presentation?
When we were heading toward stop.
Like someone said, you're like, so where does this set the challenge?
Yes. Sure.
Very good.
Alright, so the request for new and permanent on the work session tonight is to rezone two parcels located at 1036 and 1040 Whitehead Road. And, um, the request is to rezone them to RS100 and expand the boundaries of the CBD and bring them in to the central business district. Here you can see the outline of those two subject parcels that are up in consideration. As well as the current, um, designated zoning designations for those two parcels. So you can see that the larger of the two parcels there on the northern side is, um, the AF in that old green floor and then in the west corner. And then the smaller of the two parcels along Whitehead Road is currently zoned RS100. And to currently with broader context, this is the outline for the, uh, project as a whole. Um, so you can see the subject parcels that are up for that rezoning in purple, but the project that all discussed today actually takes up that entire red polygon there. And the yellow polygon being, um, a future rezoning that, um, might come before usual, uh, uh, city. And then this is, um, the conceptual site and the what's presented and why they act. So, um, this development is almost briefly described, kind of the basic elements of it. Um, it's either transforming the site into really a coherent and cohesive, uh, extension of the downtown Sugar Hill as it exists today and really aligns with the vision of, you know, the components of vision or those just listed out. It's, uh, designed to integrate, uh, makes of both residential and commercial uses and spaces, um, green spaces and it really creates, um, uh, activation of these parcels that are in such a, uh, a pivotal point of downtown Sugar Hill. The site plan includes a, um, up to a maximum of 180 residential, uh, units and, uh, makes of both single family detached townhomes and custom houses that make up the, the site plan as a whole. And it's, uh, surrounded by a really thoughtfully, uh, of this amenities to our beautiful. The key features of this site and these are reminiscent and found throughout and consistent with, um, the components of plan, uh, money connectivity and access. They leave, uh, from parcels to, uh, the, uh, shake and then go to, um, all the way through to Whitehead Road, um, and group activity. And it supports, you know, comprehensive tools for both walkability and accessibility, uh, and links residents to nearby amenities and also the Sugar Hill freeway, um, and vice versa. The existing residents to the amenities that are interposed with that segment. It also features green space and, and, uh, unbridling recreation, um, in line with the commune, the thought of, um, monetizing green space, uh, in a centralized spot in West Broad Street. And, um, also has pockets of, um, various kinds of communal spaces that really offers and fosters social interactions for, uh, the members of the community. What you, uh, what you see in the amended area is a potential, um, regional intervention home that, um, would manage the stormwater for, uh, not only this site, but also potential adjacent sites. Um, and so it really passes the land that is from a land use perspective so that, um, it's much more purposeful and sustainable to, to only its required feature on more of a regional level than happen to, uh, repeated on, on multiple parcels. Uh, there's also a variety of housing types, as I had mentioned, um, that is also a priority for all the components of the plan. Types ranging from, um, sizes of 16 by 30 feet, um, to the larger custom units, um, that are more scattered throughout the development. Some with garages, some with house, some in, you can mark with community, uh, connotations of various houses, uh, within a single neighborhood. There's also 7,500 square feet of commercial co-owning site along Broad, West West Street. And that's going to accommodate businesses that, um, enhance the community experience and also are supported by their, uh, serving co-owners as part of this development. This project, um, as was contained, really embodies the goals of the contracts of, uh, the town center, care, care area. Um, it fosters a really vibrant, uh, uh, activity center and aligns with various strategic, uh, priorities that are out in that transportation, housing, green space, sustainability, um, and kind of building off an existing success of, uh, downtown Sugar Hill. So again, I wanted to note that, uh, the proposed rezoning is just in this right here, uh, polygon. And a potential, uh, future rezoning, um, from the, the city, you know, parcels here in, um, this district. And then the, all of the, um, combination of the city, um, parcels that make up this property with the city being a really integral component of, um, this property. So with that, I, um, I'll pause momentarily for the city manager to comment on the state's.
Thank you Rebecca. The, um, the properties you see on West Bottom Whitehead, um, um, were in the central business district, um, before, um, you purchased them, um, except for the two parcels that, um, that Rebecca's pointed out that were locked at the same time, the, the corner of Whitehead, West Bottom. You were, there is not bottom of the central business district at times. Um, this is a, um, a complex real estate deal, um, that, um, city, the city transferring its ownership of property to the downtown authority for the ultimate sale to the master developer, which is Hedgewood Development. I'd point out that what the city gains from this is, um, the extension of Bailey Avenue to Whitehead that has been in our downtown ability plan, developed master plan sometime. Um, we estimate that would cost the city of, of $2 million to build. We have to do it, this will be built by the developer. Um, and then, um, the developer would also, um, build a public park for the city. Um, and, uh, our property would be part of the, um, the currency we would get those things done. Um, our property ownership here. So it's, um, this is a long thought out process that, uh, strategic purchase of these properties over the time, years to provide for, um, a pretty, um, I think great looking street skate coming down West Broad and then extending down Whitehead. And then this is the type of development I think, um, the community wants in terms of single family attached and, um, in some town homes, but all who's something, all walkable, all with different bright points and all different styles. Um, and, and here the thing it has is, um, uh, square footage ranges from around 1,000 square foot to 35 hundred square foot depending upon, um, where the location of the units are. And they spread it all about the site plan. So I just wanted to add that comment about, um, the city's ownership of property did authorize me a double session. City, you're trying to prepare a memorandum of understandings with the city to transfer property to the DDA, um, for an over approval and a private business approval, um, for ultimate sale. With that, I think with my comments.
Thank you all. So what you see if I'm just reading out is an exhibit submitted by the applicant that, that really kind of, um, contrasts the various, uh, different, uh, product types that they're operating within the development. Um, it demonstrates that there is this kind of true variety, not just in pods or phases, but actually integrated throughout the development and integrated throughout the design itself. So again, I wanted to, um, zoom in on the subject parcel. Uh, what you have for you is an exhibit of the subject rezoning itself. It makes up about 54 units, um, with a, um, recent mix of the different unit types that the applicant has proposed on site as a whole. And they also provided some representative elevations of some of these different units. Um, of course, this is kind of preliminary information. Um, the actual approval, review and approval of the design requirements will be through, uh, a potential design review process, um, sure the rezoning be approved. So here we have, uh, a representative elevation of the, uh, plot plan A as well as store plans. A different elevation to the quote. And others for a full plan A. So, uh, we did want to have to, um, just because this one has been, um, kind of back and forth with the different boards, I'm going to provide you with a, a timeline of the application. It was first provided by the commission on August 19th. And my commission recommended a table so that they could, um, view a second and then his addition information. That's up to the second, that's when, uh, the venue that all went to was, um, authorized from the Florida City of Orange, reception overnight. We, and the council unanimously, uh, voted to remain the application back to the commission and took a table to that for discussion, which is the result of our review tonight. And then subsequent to the last number was here, on September 16th, you know, commission voted, I mean, three, the two extensions to recommend an I, uh, plus, um, from their conversation, members discussed kind of that there was, um, they did not feel there's still enough information for them to be able to make a fine decision. And so hearing that feedback, the applicant, um, is back before you today, has worked with staff to address all of the application requirements and has corrected any debates and has provided the checklist. Wanted to, um, just provide for you the rezoning criteria. And for considering rezonies, a lot of, um, all of these which were outlined in your staff report. And, um, you know, the particular things that I've discussed in my presentation for the concurrence with the components of the project, not only, um, being in accordance to it, but that also supporting the action of the vision from the present. So that's the staff recommends, um, approval of the request to rezone from, um, to RS100, the NCD, and also, uh, expanding the boundaries of the CED to accommodate those two parcels. Uh, we are recommending two.
Conditions, the first being to conform to the site plan, um, with allowing some departures, given that there is the follow-up design review process. Um, that would accommodate any kind of, uh, comments that you might have on the designs at that time that might impact the site plan to not necessitate them having to kind of come back through for a zoning amendment. And then the second one being, uh, that the, um, that they have to include three natural gas appliances in each residential unit. So that concludes the presentation. I'm ready for questions.
Alright, thank you Rebecca, thank you Paul. Um, any questions, uh, from city council or staff? Yes, Taylor.
Um, Rebecca, could you go back to the site plan?
That one good?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, for the park, and that's the champion tree there with the circle around it. Would the park be owned by the city?
I, I, likely, those are probably some details that will be worked out in the MOU.
I know that's not part of this, I know that parcel's not part of this zoning, but just one.
I'd like to speak to the yes.
Okay, alright, great. Yeah, that was some, that's, that's obviously very important. Uh, Champion Tree Park would be something that's very, very important for the, the city to own and maintain and, and maintain control of. Um, that, the larger central parcel, which is not part of this zoning, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, this, this one.
And it's already inside the central business district?
That's correct.
Alright, so what, roughly, what is that, the property that is there? That, that piece which is already owned by, uh, it's not owned by Hedgewood, but is owned by, uh, the applicant. What is it entitled to today?
So the multifamily, uh, if it was multifamily that, uh, was opted to go there, they are allowed up to, um, an FAR of two to one. Um, and so on all of the kind of existing CBD parcels, um, that would equate to, uh, almost 800,000 square feet.
800,000 square feet of entitlements on how many acres?
Uh, a little less than eight, or sorry, a little less than nine.
Little less than nine. So that would roughly, Paul, help me out here, that would be roughly about the size of the local? Um, how do we condition that? If council chooses to approve this, how do they, how do we condition it so that the, I know we've got a site plan conditioned, but that only would apply to the two parcels, is that correct, that are under subject to rezoning? Okay, so I think that would be something that would be important for us to consider too is, uh, making sure obviously that the site plan that we are seeing before us is the, is in totality of, of that, um, of what the development is planned to be. I think that's an important consideration. I think it's, I think it's an important consideration for council to understand that this site plan would be significantly fewer, almost, well, if, entitled in the CBD, but this number of acres would entitle it to probably somewhere in the five, potentially up to 500 units. Okay. Alright, um, overall, I like the site plan. I think it's a, I think it's a big improvement over what we've seen previously and, and has addressed some, addressed my concerns over that. So I appreciate the applicant and Rebecca, I appreciate your presentation. That's all, any questions, I'll admit.
Alright, thank you Taylor, any other questions? Alright, yes, Meg.
I have, I have one question. Um, you had mentioned that these 180 units are a mix of single and custom homes. For the CBD, they are restricted to townhouses, row houses and zero lot line houses. So the custom homes would have to be one of those category of homes, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you Meg, any other questions? Alright, no other questions, we'll move on to the items under new business. And we have several design review. Rebecca, are you going to take item number two as well?
I am not, I'm just trying to set it up for him.
Thank you. Welcome up Logan.
Good evening y'all. Alright, so this is a design review within the central business district 24-002 at 1125 Whitehead Road. Uh, it's a parcel just about directly adjacent to the roundabout with the Sugar Hill cart and the cemetery. The cemetery owns the property that is actually directly next to the roundabout. Uh, the parcel is currently zoned O and I within the central business district. Uh, my research has revealed that it's been zoned O and I for at least 30, 40 years, um, going back a very long ways. It's currently developed with a, a single family residential structure built in 1951. So it's been illegal non-conforming use for decades. Uh, the applicant is seeking to revitalize this property into a commercial office use as well as adding storage garage towards the rear of the property. The applicant is vets off leash, they currently operate out of the sweet spot, so they're in effect graduating to a new location within our downtown area. The garage is primarily for storage of their mobile vet van. And this is just a brief overview of their site plan. Uh, going to be adding a little bit of parking to accommodate some of the employees that'll be working there, um, having some ADA access for any potential visitors that may come. However, the applicant has expressed that this is a very low traffic business. They're not really expecting customers in and out every day. And this is the house as it is right now. It'll largely remain the same, they may, you know, paint it, refresh it a little bit, do a little landscaping, uh, they're going to improve that parking area like I mentioned, retain a lot of the trees on the property, if not all of them, uh, and then build that garage towards the rear. And then just another view of the property. And then the sign is a consideration of this design review. It'll require a separate permit, but they've included just some kind of conceptual idea of what the sign might look like on the property. So we're just, uh, recommending approval of this design review. Um, final building design shall substantially resemble all the attached exhibits, one and two. And then we'll just finalize the material and color selection with them when they go through the permitting process. And with that, I can take any questions.
Logan, thank you. Any questions from city council? Yes, sir.
Alright, so could you, uh, display the, um, site plan that shows the house and the building? Right there, so all that spotted area up the top, is new concrete?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Okay, I mean, that's an awful lot of concrete. It looks like, I don't know, maybe a third of the lot, is that allowed under the zoning?
It would be.
Under the current regulations, that's allowed? What do the regulations allow there?
We, we've also been in discussions with them about potentially using pervious pavers on the property just to help kind of reduce that potential, uh, water flow if there is a problem. But that will be all addressed in permitting with our, our regulations of stormwater management.
And what is the water flow, what's the elevation on that property? Does it flow into the cemetery or flow to the street?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I, it's relatively flat.
Thank you.
Thank you Gary, any other questions? Alright, we'll move on to new business item number three. Claire, welcome up.
Good evening, um, DRB TCO 24-003 is for remodel in addition of a residence at 5017 Spring Hill Drive. Located in a residential area, grounded largely by residential zonings. So these are photographs of the existing house. Um, largely the exterior front-facing facade will remain unchanged. It will maintain the, the brick and the windows. They are proposing adding a covered porch to the front as well as, um, updating the front door. And then as you can see in the elevations, they're at, they, um, are proposing an addition to the rear of the building. It's a 600-foot addition, um, to serve as a fourth bedroom for the home. This is their site plan. You can see that is, the kind of square filled in is the, uh, addition to the rear of the house, kind of on the western side of it, at the rear. Staff is recommending approval, um, with, with substantial conformance to the attached exhibits.
Thank you Claire, and appreciate the presentation. Uh, any questions from city council?
Just one question there. Can you show the, uh, site plan for that one as well? That one. Um, which part of that is the new addition?
It's kind of the back left.
Okay.
When you're looking at it.
The back right is already existing?
Yes.
Okay, I was only concerned about the distance from there to the property line. But it's back left, I have no questions.
Thank you Gary, anybody else? Meg, yes ma'am.
I just have one question, you said in addition of a fourth bedroom, correct?
Yes.
Um, on the, um, I went over there and looked and I also checked the, um, tax assessor website, which lists it as a four-bedroom, one bathroom house. So I was a little curious about adding a bedroom. It's already listed as a four-bedroom.
Um, the letter of intent stated it will be a fourth bedroom. I haven't been in the house, so I, the applicant, the property owner may be able to speak further to that. And then we can get that question answered, but I can just speak to, to what was presented to us.
Let's get that question answered before next week. And I would imagine honestly, probably those tax records are, who knows how, how old they are, so, um, they might not be reflective of the current condition.
I'd also want to comment as well, given that, the age of that house, they may be combining one or making an older bedroom into a closet or something and then doing a master or something to that effect. So it, it may not change the net, uh, it may be four and now it's just going to be still four, but bigger.
Thank you Gary, and I'm not real sure we can dictate the number of rooms inside of a house either, but it's a great, it's a great question. Alright, any other questions? Alright, we will move on to item number four, and that is Claire again, I think.
Yes.
Thank you.
DRB 24-004 at 1011 Level Creek Road. Um, this address may look familiar to you all as a case was brought before y'all at the previous meeting. Um, the applicant has since come back with a revised site plan to accommodate some of the comments that were heard previously. So it's located along Level Creek Road and just off of the Greenway, grounded largely by residences. This is a photo of the original structure, however, that has since been demoed and currently stands as, uh, just kind of the, the foundation and some of the bones of the house. This is the site plan, so it's a pretty substantial addition to the original structure, um, as well as upgrading what's an existing gravel driveway along Level Creek Road to concrete or asphalt, um, as well as removal of the gravel driveway that's located along Cold Creek Lane and that will be filled in with grass or lawn. Um, they're retaining their, uh, kind of older growth oak trees at the rear of the property, um, and have one large deck at the rear of the property as well. The house features navy blue siding with white trim, um, a small front porch and, uh, landscaped planters at the front of the property. Then here are some details on their, their colors that they've chosen. And staff is recommending a. And staff is recommending approval with substantial conformance to the attached exhibits.
Thank you, Claire, again, for a good presentation. Any questions on this one that we have before? It's a new version. Yes, Gary?
So the difference between this and the plan we saw before appears that they've removed the one driveway, and they've made it one deck instead of two decks. Anything else that I didn't notice that's different?
For the exterior of the building, as pertains to the designer view, that, those are the main differences.
Okay. And when the applicant was here before, he indicated a desire to eventually make this a townhome. I'm sorry, not a townhome, a duplex, right? And so I'm not saying a duplex is out of character without hearing anything, but if that's still his intent, is there a particular reason for going this direction instead of just asking for the duplex that he originally wanted to build as a single-family?
We have not heard intent for pursuing a zoning that would allow for a duplex, rather that they would, that they'll just stick with the single-family detached zoning.
Deal with that later.
They haven't stated whether or not that's in the plan at all.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we don't take, this is a work session, so apologize. You'll have the opportunity to speak next Monday night when we have the hearing, and everybody has the opportunity to speak. Appreciate it. All right, any other questions of Claire from City Council? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to item number five, and that is the contract award for the Highway 20 pedestrian bridge. And I know Troy is not here this evening. Paul, you're going to handle that?
I am. I won't do as good a job as he would do on this one, since I'm not an engineer, but I will go over the staff recommendation. The project is programmed in 2024.
Paul, if there's anything that you need to put on the board?
I don't have anything to put up there, but...
No worries, we just still have the...
The images are in your...
You got it?
Packet. So the pedestrian bridge project is programmed in the 2024 capital improvement budget for the initial stages of construction, which is comprised of both SPOLOST 2017 and SPOLOST 2023. And since the project will span budget years, the balance of the project is budgeted for the remainder of the project in 2025, an amount of 4.25 million. Once again, with SPOLOST and ARPA funding, and basically coming out of the general fund balances, which is set aside for the pedestrian bridge. On the basis of staff recommendations and planning documents like our comprehensive and downtown master plans, the City Council approved and adopted the capital improvement budget for 2024 in order to accomplish the action items and work programs associated with the planning efforts. These documents, along with the recommendations in them, include transportation improvement projects like the pedestrian bridge over Highway 20 to connect segments of our community in the Greenway Trail System on the north and south sides of the wide section of highway. We use these planning exercises to strategically plan for future conditions. During the budget presentation last year, we also considered the 2005 Town Center Master Plan in its reference to a grade-separated pedestrian crossing of Highway 20. At the time, it was a tunnel. It was taken, it's now taken some 20 years to get to the point where the bridge is needed. But credit is due to the vision of those before us who anticipated the future conditions of the four-lane highway, divided highway, commercial core downtown, and a pedestrian pathway to other parts of the city. A bridge is much needed for conflict avoidance with vehicles, for some 38,000 vehicle trips a day, as well as for efficient operation of the adjacent intersection. A critical segment for safe pedestrian passage across the road for the 2,700 beneficiaries that live on the north side of Highway 20 and about 3,000 south of the road, or nearly 20% of the city's population along the Greenway sector. The primary project objective is to provide a grade-separated pedestrian crossing over the 110-foot-wide roadway for safety reasons and conflict resolution, but also for shortening the signal cycle. I won't go into all the details in the staff report, but that, depending on how mobile you are, it takes a long time to get across the road, and it also then slows down traffic, and it also increases the amount of time you sit at an intersection. The design phase of this was done over the last several years. The bridge layout, including ramps, were designed to take advantage of both the termini of the Greenway connections, both north side and south side, as well as the topography and the location currently proposed. At the time the location was selected, the south side of State Route 20 was purchased by the city from JW Trucks in the north side of the subject of development interest after the highway widening impacted the northeast, northwest quarter of Stanley Road, Stanley Street. The ramps were chosen to make grade, due to the drop in elevation from the East Center running north, and then turning west across Highway 20 to shorten the ramp while meeting ADA slope standards that had been applied to the Greenway design. Ramp alignment on the north side also seeks to honor the original Town Center Master Plan destination of the church parking, which is used for concert parking currently. We selected materials for this to look for long-term maintenance and durability. Well, it's a pre-stressed concrete design, was selected during the early scoping phase of the project in 2022. It is a cost-effective material that does not need a lot of maintenance, as powder-coated steel truss, notably over the highway, would. So lead time, lifecycle cost, appearance, and the ease of construction are all improved with concrete components. Architectural finishes and aesthetic considerations were then contemplated to provide a form noteworthy of its location of arriving in Sugar Hill. Balancing form and function, the design intent of the bridge seeks to functionally convey pedestrians across the expanse of Highway 20, but it also communicates the sense of arrival to a unique place with a message of genetic strands that gives Sugar Hill its own DNA. The ribbons also hint at our walkable, vibrant Greenway, as well as the hills that are often claimed to be the hill where the sugar spilled. The steel tubes that makes up the ribbons are designed by Henry Steel, whose forms give many of the overpass structures on interstates in metro Atlanta a decorative enhancement. The project was, has been fully designed and permitted through the Georgia Department of Transportation. We had, we published bids on the state procurement registry, and we received three bids from qualified contractors. All contractors that deal with bridge work in the state have to be certified by the Department of Transportation, and they all met the criteria for this type of work. The costs of the project were estimated earlier in this year by our engineering consultant to be 5.5 million, and the budget set at 6 million. All the bids came in over budget, and staff is seeking to negotiate with the low bidder for a project cost that was closer to the budget while maintaining true to the project goals and objectives, otherwise described as valued engineering. Updates will be presented at the council meeting next week by Troy, and will include funding recommendations from other SPOLOST-funded projects for any reductions not achieving the original budget number. Staff is recommending approval of the contract award. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions of Paul about the contract award? Yes, Taylor?
Paul, in discussing with Troy, and he had mentioned the value engineering, the overwhelming number of comments I got on this were positive. I think the one thing that, and it's not, it wasn't a high number of them, but there were folks that were critical of the design. I guess as we go through the value engineering of this, making sure that we maintain as much of the design aesthetic and look at options on how we could increase the design aesthetic. I know that touring Gainesville's pedestrian bridge, they have a very nice pedestrian bridge that's not imposing at all, is actually very pleasant to walk across. And they just used fencing, they have vertical elements on it, but then it has fencing through those vertical elements to meet the G-dot requirements to make sure that folks aren't, can't throw large objects onto the roadway below. So that, I just, as we go through that value engineering exercise, make sure that the aesthetic of the bridge doesn't become vanilla or look like a, just simply look like an interstate ramp and bridge. That would be, that's very important. And that's the only feedback I had. Thank you.
Thank you for the input, Taylor. Anybody else? Questions or, yes, Meg?
Paul, in your report, you mentioned that this is safe pedestrian passage for 2,700 beneficiaries north of Highway 20 and about 3,000 south of the road. Can you give me a basic idea of not just those numbers, but what neighborhoods or what streets you're referring to in those?
Meg, I appreciate that question, but I'm going to assure you that Paul has no idea. And I don't think he can give you the, go ahead. I mean, I don't think we can list every street and every neighborhood, yeah. But that's what you asked. Got it, absolutely.
My observation of that, as I did my own digging into the areas north and south of the neighborhood, it's about a one-mile radius around the bridge, roughly. That would be all of Hillcrest, all the neighborhoods on Hillcrest, including Primrose, along with the new developments on Stanley, and then south of the city it would have been, of course, the developments downtown, Whitehead, and then going down Whitehead about a half-mile, and then down Level Creek about a half to three-quarters of a mile, those neighborhoods that are within that vicinity. Most of those obviously existing, but, and the Spring Hill. Basically, from Spring Hill, the Spring Hill area coming up to downtown would be the south side of that. That was, and that, my numbers, and I did not ask Troy about that. That was just me using, when I had GIS, to come up with that, in roughly like a mile.
Taylor?
And maybe I'd be happy to share. I actually have some exhibits, I'll be happy to email you, so you can see what they were.
Thank you, Taylor. Thank you, Meg. I think Taylor's written a great article, and he might even have an image in there of the benefit. I'm not sure, but...
I'll get those images, I'll be happy to share that with council.
Got it. Any other questions? Yes, Josh?
I know, our ARPA funds have to be encumbered by the end of this year, is that correct, Paul? And then completely spent by 2020, end of 2025? So I understand we're on a timeline. But kind of to echo what Taylor says, I feel like our backs have been almost pushed in a way that we have designed something, and it's not that it's awful, Paul, but I feel like it was clearly put together, because I know you're looking at P Street Corners, not saying that's the best bridge out there, looking at Gainesville, not saying that's the best bridge out there, but the element of just the industrial feel that we see here, and I know that's a whole can of worms when we start talking about design elements. I mean, it's just, I hate to say yes to something that is $7 million, and we have to live with it for the next, hopefully, 50, 60, 70 years, if it's done correctly. So I just want to make sure that through our value engineering exercise of what we come up with, whatever that is, that it is still, in essence, a project that is, A, going to be sustainable, and B, also capture the essence of what we have here in Sugar Hill. So this is my food for thought here, because I know, like I said, we're kind of pressed for time a little bit here to encumber funds, however we're going to encumber, so.
All good points, and I've got a suggestion. Maybe Josh and Taylor, maybe y'all work with staff on that value engineering and make it a product that we can be proud of. Does that sound like a, I know y'all have limited time, but input would probably be helpful. Yes, ma'am, of course.
And referring to the ARPA funds and in looking at this whole project, could you also, next week, could we be provided with a list or some parameters of if this didn't go through, and we have to use those ARPA funds, what are our other choices for those ARPA funds? That'd be great.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to item number six, and that is the Creek Bluff Stormwater Improvement. Paul, is that you as well?
Yeah. This project is also currently proposed to be funded from ARPA, since stormwater isn't eligible, project for this. It would also require a budget amendment in the CIP to recognize ARPA funding for this particular project. The city purchased 4605 Creek Bluff in February 2021 as a settlement of a lawsuit with the previous owner at the recommendation of our insurance legal counsel at the time. The property has a drainage easement and large pipe running through the property and extending both upstream and downstream, some 200-plus feet. The middle section of the pipe, which is corrugated metal, has corroded, failed, and collapsed on itself, leaving a large hole in the backyard of the house at 4605. The pipe and hole are immediately adjacent to a sewer pipe and stormwater pond serving the neighborhood. The recent storms have brought to the attention the safety concerns regarding the city's property interests, risk exposure, and financial interests in ultimate disposal of the property. Staff developed a brief request for proposals in-house to replace the pipe and downstream infrastructure associated with the system, and has had discussions with the neighboring property owners to get access to the property. And then we've advertised and received sealed bids for the work. Three were received. Dickerson Group was at $210,268.50, Civil Construction and Utilities at $241,420, and Reeves Young at $515,100. We've reviewed the proposals, the vendor qualifications and references, and we would recommend award of the contract to the services, to the Dickerson Group, and approve the corresponding budget amendment. So that is the staff recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Any questions of Paul? All right, no questions, we'll move on to item number seven, which is the one that we have up on the screen before us. Logan, thank you.
All right, this one should be brief. This is a 2018 International Residential Code Amendment, brought to our attention by our head building inspector, Mauricio. He is, he's recommending that we remove some certain terminology from the 2018 code as adopted by the state of Georgia. Just because there is some ambiguous language there in working with some private developers within the city, there's been some back and forth on interpretations of this particular section regarding firewall separation. So we are proposing to remove the term "projections," just the one word, that's it. Everything else stays the same. And we've also submitted this to the DCA for review in accordance with the Uniform Codes Act.
Thank you, Logan. And this is actually in your e-packet. For whatever reason, my e-packet's not working tonight, so thank you. Thank you for putting that up.
Yeah, this is a red line. Like I said, just the one word, everything else stays the same. It just clarifies, makes it a little more restrictive on the builder to actually provide those firewalls.
And that is literally it?
That is literally it.
Okay, we got it.
But very important, so...
Yes, Gary.
So, question on that. So we're removing projections that were listed as an exception. So just to try and clarify, are we tightening down, or we're loosening up on these projections?
We are technically tightening down, so. And I am not a building code expert, but it was relayed to me that this is more restrictive, so.
And this is projection from foundation walls?
From walls, yes. It has to do with the fire separation walls. In this case, for attached dwelling units, just providing that separation based on where some of the openings were in their floor plans, it wasn't quite lining up with what we would expect from the builder to provide. So this is tightening down.
And this is only in connection with automatic sprinkler systems? Nothing else related to projections? For instance, I mean, you have projections from time to time, you know, that are used as part of retaining walls or... you know, that are used as part of retaining walls or for driveways and stuff. It doesn't pertain to any of that. This is interior to the house?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, that's my reading as well. One word. That's a lot of work for one word, but I guess it's important. Any other questions of Logan? All right. Thank you, Logan. All right, next, we're gonna move on to, to updates and discussion. I do just have one question for the group. I think generally speaking, 10 minutes works, 10 minutes for each side works pretty good most of the time, unless we have an unusual circumstance. I maybe anticipate them, anticipating item number two, you might need a little bit more time. Would y'all be okay just in advance, contemplating 15 minutes for each side versus the 10 that we traditionally do?
Mayor, do you mean item number three?
Or item number one?
Apologize.
Yeah, or?
Excuse me, item number one?
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. Okay, sounds good. Just, well, I'll make the announcement before we open up the hearing for that next Monday. All right, now let's move on to the updates and discussion. And it looks like the first one is a zoning ordinance amendment for driveways. I know we've talked about that.
Rebecca's gonna handle that.
Good evening. Yes, this is a, we're, we're coming back to you from a discussion that I think we originally had in August related to driveways, both gravel as a material and also parking on various driveway surfaces. So there are three sections that kind of overlap in this framework. One related to various limitations on in which yards that you can park in. Another one discussing kind of the materials you can park on, as well as another standard for the property as a whole. And then another one that has some of those kind of repeated regulations related to automobiles and motor vehicles. So based on the discussion that Mayor and City Council had in August, we did an analysis of some neighboring jurisdictions and found some jurisdictions allow gravel, some require parking on a more finished surface. The percentages kind of range anywhere from 30% to 50% and, but mostly regulated kind of front yard maximums. And so what we provided for you in your staff report to be able to kind of speak to all of the different policy priorities that we heard in August that you might want to consider for a text amendment related to this, we provided you a menu of options. And what we wanted to, the kind of feedback that we were looking for was to, one, none of them are, they're not mutually exclusive. You can initiate one or some, some or all of them, and they would not be conflicting in the way that we proposed them. So I'll present them kind of as three distinct amendments, but we can certainly implement all three, and they are standalone. And then also, based on the, just kind of summary criteria that we are proposing, let me know your feedback on whether or not that's the kind of information that you want to see in the ultimate text amendment. And then we will, based on what you, whatever direction you give us, we'll make those adjustments when we develop the red lines and actually go through the formal text amendment process. So the first, the first option is to consolidate those regulations from Section 407 and 1106. Those were the two most kind of seemingly conflicting sections. So just making sure that there's one place that applicants and staff can go to cite that criteria. And then we, based on, we did a kind of brief analysis of some sites within the city and found that if we are looking at parking as a whole, that 30, 35% is actually quite a lot to allow on the site as a whole. Looking at even the most kind of intensely developed lot that we did, you can see in our staff report, that was a maximum of 15%, of the entire lot that was parked. And so we were looking at reducing that proportion to a total of 20% parked. Now, that does not change the limitation of the maximum impervious surface on single-family residential lots, which is 40%. So those regulations would then layer on top whether or not you'll allow gravel as a surface or not. So then the second option would be to allow gravel driveways as a temporary installation. And so we would make use of the current temporary permit process and write in a set of review criteria. So these are kind of the minimum barriers to entry. If you would like a temporary permit, you have to meet one of these four criteria. The property's undergoing construction or renovation, and it's not feasible. There's some sort of temporary financial inability that there's some sort of season or weather, weather condition, or there's a future development. So this is kind of a transitional development. We can expand that criteria. We can allow it in any situation, but we just wanted to provide you with kind of the bones of, of options and then have you walk them back or forward as you see fit. And then within that, not really have many design requirements since it is a temporary driveway, but put forth some parameters that it's allowed for 18 to 24 months. It can be extended for a six-month period. The only design requirement is that you have to maintain the gravel on your property and that when your permit expires, you have to return it to its, its previous condition. And then the last option is an option for permanent gravel driveways. And so this would be limited by that 20%, but potentially not by the 40% impervious surface for the lot as a whole. And so we did propose some design requirements for that, kind of consistent with the commercial requirements. Quarter-inch gravel and at four inches in depth, that there's gotta be a border. Again, no gravel leaving the site. And then that there would be aprons to comply. And just a couple of important notes, we, we did want to note that based on the nonconforming Article 8, that this wouldn't be retroactive, that it would be everything moving forward, that everything that exists today would be allowed to exist as a nonconformity, provided they don't make any of the alterations that are spelled out in the nonconforming section, and that this would only apply to single-family detached properties as, as currently proposed now.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any, any feedback for Rebecca?
I have a few comments.
Yes, Gary?
So I think I muddled this issue, starting out on OMEG, introduced it as trying to deal with a third driveway. And, and I think I crossed things up a bit where my intention was talking, not necessarily about driveways, but the temporary parking pads, which I think it should be temporary where you're, you've overfilled your driveway. I, I do like what you've got here about these conditions and reasons for them. Also, what you had in there about anything currently permitted being there. One thought on the permanent gravel driveways, if we choose to allow those, would be something similar where you had a, a reason for it, because I, I know where there are some currently in the city, and, and the reason for them is because they have an accessory structure that they're trying to access.
Okay.
And so, but, but I don't think that is, is gonna be a widespread thing. But that, that was a reason that I found valid for ones that are existing. And we may just leave it covered by the existing. But I do like kind of the way you've structured that. It gives us a, a way of putting some things in there that may not necessarily be time-related if they're conditional-related. So I, I do need to study the ordinances as they currently exist and where you wanted to move and combine those. But, but I think this gives us a structure we could possibly use to deal with all of these kind of different small issues that have been joined together. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I think, Meg, ready?
Rebecca, this looks very good. It looks very good. I would like to know, from a planning and zoning perspective, what do you define as driveway? Because as Gary mentioned, I, you know, there is a difference between an actual, real driveway and a little rectangular parking pad. And as I drove through several neighborhoods in Sugar Hill to kind of look at all the differences, many of the actual driveways look pretty good. It's some of the people that have a little rectangular gravel pad next to their concrete driveway is what looks really bad. So I think we need to specifically define what you mean by driveway. And I don't know if there should be something separate in here for a parking pad that's next to your driveway. Because as I say, I see some really nice gravel driveways out there. They extend from the front of the yard to the back or the front up to the garage. But these little rectangles are what does not look good. I appreciate the research. I think this sounds really good. And we are certainly on the right track. But could you tell me what P&amp;Z defines as a driveway? And is there not a distinction between driveway and parking pad?
And, and that's something that we can kind of clean up and refine if it's not clear today as a function of these, because there's, there's definitions of like whether or not the gravel should, from a policy perspective, should we consider the gravel to be pervious or not, depending on the material that's used and things? So I think that's a bit of the, where the rubber meets the road of the, the red line text amendments. We can kind of consider the various options to whether or not a parking pad is considered the same as a, as a driveway for the, both the limitations of the 20% and then also for some of the various other regulations that we're talking about.
Josh?
No, I appreciate staff time for, for doing this. I, I think it captured really what, what we're trying to go after, the essence. One thing, I know I've said it before up here, I will say it again. My concern is with editing what we're doing now and putting more restrictions on code enforcement is, I mean, I'm sitting here looking at the September report, and September is the lowest month for code enforcement inspections and lowest month for notice of violations, lowest month for citations. So my concern is that we continue to add things to citeate, and yet we're, we're not citating what we currently have issues with. And, and there's a mountain, I'm sure we can all come up with five things up here just right now of what should be cited and followed up with. So that, that is my concern of how are we, as we continue to add things, how are we actually following up and enforcing what we already have? So I mean, I think it's fine. I have no problems with a temporary permit. I have a problem with how are we going to make sure that we applied for a permit and it just gets lost in the sauce of, ah, well, it's a driveway, you know, maybe it was there before. So it's just those questions of how do we continue to enforce and maintain that stability? So, thank you.
All right. Thank you for the input. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Rebecca. Next, we'll move on to board meeting times and locations. And I think that was an item that Meg wanted to discuss.
Yes, it is. I had asked that to be on the agenda for two main reasons. Because the way that Sugar Hill is growing, and I was looking again at the website of what boards we have, what time they meet, where they meet. And earlier in the year, that had led to creating an attendance policy for the Planning Commission. And I think we need to provide consistency with times and locations for the boards. And at the moment, what I would like to address is the Downtown Development Authority and the Riverlands Authority. Those are our only two authorities in Sugar Hill. They both meet at different times and different locations. And I would like to have a discussion if we could agree that the DDA and the Riverland would both meet. Right now, the Downtown Development Authority meets at 6:30. The Riverlands meets at 5:30 in the community room. They're the only board authority that does not use the council chambers. And we have so much going on with Riverlands. We have so much going on with the Downtown Development Authority. I think that 5:30 is a difficult time for the public to try to attend the Riverlands Authority. And we need to encourage public input. And we don't always have a lot of surveys. And we had the InVision 100, and we had some community input on Riverlands, but I just think that the way that we're growing, I'd really like to see some consistency. The Planning Commission meets at 7:00. And ideally, we should just say across the board, 7:00. But being that we have one authority at 6:30, one at 5:30, I, I would like to see both authorities at 6:30 and in the council chambers. Now, I do understand that the Youth Council meets at 5:30 in the council chambers. I don't think 6:30 would be a conflict. We had a public hearing for the military here at 6:00, and then the Planning Commission met at 6:45, and that was not a problem. Maybe the Youth Council might want to meet at 5:00. That might be better for the students. I don't know. But I would like for the council to consider as a discussion, as I said, these two authorities meeting in 6:30, council chambers.
Thank you, Megan. Just for clarification, you're not saying they meet on the same night?
No, they don't.
So can you, can you clarify, like, and I don't go to the meetings because I think it's inappropriate, but what are the?
The Youth Council and the Riverlands meet on the same night. Both at, both at 5:30. So the Youth Council is here in the council chambers. Riverlands meets in the community room.
Yes, Josh?
I, I don't know, Paul or Taylor, is there background? Was the date just selected for the Riverlands time and place? Or I don't know if there's a reason, just background information here.
Well, we had to pick a, a date that, and the second Wednesday was selected, that was worked for most of the folks that, or all the folks that are on the Riverlands Authority. As far as the time, it was really just to accommodate meeting times for, and I, I'd have never heard of a 5:30 being a difficult for public to attend. I don't know why 5:30. I mean, there's city council meetings that meet at, that meet all over the state that meet at 5 o'clock, and that's the time they start. I don't, I don't know why 5:30 would be a, a problem for folks to attend. As far as the location goes, the, of course, the Youth Council's up here. But we, I mean, we met as a DDA for, gosh, how long? 10 years? No, not, maybe not 10 years, but it was a long time. We met in the, probably about six years. We met, I guess, down in the community room. And it was never, I mean, it's never been an issue. The community room's a smaller room. It's more collaborative than this. This is, I mean, I'm constantly having to turn back and forth to talk to the various folks up here. The Authority is a collaborative group. And I, I mean, for the, and we only typically have three to four people that attend anyway. And so I, I don't know. I just, and I don't know why we need consistency in meet, in board meeting times. Doesn't seem like it matters to me what time that folks meet. It's, it's on the website. It's the same time they've been, we've been meeting at for two years without, without incidents. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Taylor, for the input. Any other input? Yes, Gary?
I'll just say, I, I would personally like to see all of them. You know, council meeting, I know it's specified in charter, but yeah, I think a standard time is, is gonna be, if everything was 7:00, I think would be fine. In terms of 5:30, I think a lot of people have issues getting home in the traffic. Some may work closer, may work from home. But to anyone that's working downtown, it's, it can be difficult. Plus, you know, even if you can get there on a regular basis, you never know what one day is gonna be with traffic. So, so I like, I like the idea, but I would prefer 7:00 to 6:30 just since that's when most of the meetings already are right now. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right, and I'll give my opinions unless somebody else wants to give theirs as well. But, you know, we, these are all run by volunteers. And, you know, they do the best that they can to do a good job for us. Actually think it's important to empower the leadership on our boards and commissions. And I'll tell you what I would probably support if it came across my desk, and that would be a decision by the members of each of the boards and commissions if they would like to change their time. I am like Taylor. I have, I started serving on the Downtown Development Authority probably four years before, you know, I became a member of city council. So that would have been like in the, in the 1010, something like that. And so, you know, we used to meet in the annex for a long time. Mayor Edwards held our work sessions in the community room. Mayor Edwards held our work sessions in the community room downstairs, and the reason that he did that was because he heard from so many complaints about people that feel intimidated in this room, because people literally sit over the audience. And so I think, I think it's just a choice, depending on the personality of the board and the commission, and it's, and, you know, maybe they just want to have a more intimate atmosphere. I've heard of one complaint, one individual, the parent likes to pull plugs out of the wall, so if there's more, more people that have concern about that, I haven't really heard from, from anybody. So just wanted to give my opinion. Yes, sir, Taylor.
Just to follow up on that point, when we first started serving on the DDA and the annex, we actually pulled out folding tables. We did not sit at the dais in the annex, we sat at the, so that we could get together and talk, and look at documents together, and talk about things, we actually just pulled out folding tables in front of the dais. We didn't actually sit at the dais, in the annex even, when we met over in that location, so.
Go ahead, thank you. So, anybody else? Appreciate the conversation about it. Thanks for letting everybody give their opinion on it. All right, then we're going to move on to 2025 proposed budget timeline discussion. I don't think that's Meg's, well?
Yes, it is. Thank you. I had asked that to be on the agenda tonight, because it is October, and I was looking back over my notes, and at the July work session, we had a discussion about the budget and when a preliminary budget would be available, especially since the city charter says, indicates not later than 90 days prior to the beginning of each fiscal year, which would mean October 1st, which we had discussed in July. And at that work session, it was agreed that mid-October would be an option, but not much later. The direction at that work session was given by the mayor for Paul to check with Cindy, since she was on vacation that week, to check with the dates and get back with us after her vacation. I have not yet heard anything about when the budget will be ready, and as we did with approving the budget by ordinance last year because of the city charter, we need to continue following the charter, and I'd like to know where we are with the budget, and do we have any dates of, will we be able to have a preliminary budget at next week's council meeting, and when we'll have notice of the public hearings for the budget, basically, when it'll be available? So any, Paul, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Meg. Paul?
I appreciate the question. We're on schedule, at least from our staff perspective, to have it available for action in November, which would be earlier than it's been adopted in the last 10 or 15 years. So we plan, we're still finalizing the budget, and the process is a very lengthy process, starting in August, when we send budget worksheets to our staff. And then, end of August, we get, we do a detailed review and analysis of revenue trends and estimates. And then we work on budget worksheets that are due to the finance department, and then we begin in September and October with meetings with each department head to discuss and analyze their requests. And then we attempt, when I say "we," the collective "we" is the finance director Cindy Pugh, myself, and assistant city manager Troy Vasasch, to finalize the budget and then review where we are with the department heads again, give them a second chance to, if we misunderstood what they wanted, or we'll tell them what we were proposing cutting. And so here's the, you asked the question, when will the budget be ready? We plan on advertising the presentation of the budget in public hearings, get the legal ad to the paper on the 15th of October, and then it will be available for review in the city clerk's office and on the website October 21st. The first public hearing will be November 4th, and assuming the council changes its November council meeting, it would be on, November 12th would be the second public hearing for the adoption of the budget. And then our next step, once the, once the budget's adopted, we will then prepare budget documents to give to department heads, and we'd send it to state-required sites, website, and to city council. And then January 1st, the budget becomes effective. So that's our schedule. But the critical times you're asking about would be advertising the paper on October 20th, and I would make it available on the website and in the city clerk's office on the 21st. Obviously, I would send it to y'all at that time as well.
Thank you, Paul. You got it, and I think we've talked about this before, the budget timeline's going to vary. I mean, we, we get the tax digest from the county whenever they decide to send this, send it to us every year. We need that in order to be able to do the millage rate hearings. And so, because they were late in getting us the tax digest this year, we had to do the millage rate hearings in October. That obviously determines the amount of funds that will come to the city for next year that can be budgeted, and so unfortunately, that's just kind of what we, we work with. And as Paul mentioned, if you look back in the meeting minutes over the years, this is, I think, one of the earliest times that we've adopted it, at least since I've been on city council, there are some examples of adoptions even in January, I believe, in the past. And I don't know the reasons for that, but I would imagine they were probably under similar circumstances, where they just, they didn't have all the financial data that they needed in order to get everything prepared for us, so. Yes, Paul?
And there's some advantage, even though that, I know our charter says that we should have it done by October 1st, or no later, 90 days before the end of the fiscal year. That just hasn't, as the mayor said, this has not been standard operating procedure. But despite what, what you think, or what, we're not trying to delay things, but I can tell you that having later data is, is good in terms of estimating revenue and expenditure patterns, and there's a, there's a rhythm to our revenue, and there's a rhythm to our expenditures, and taking a snapshot of our budget at any particular time in the year doesn't accurately reflect where we are in terms of future spending, because some things are done later in the year, like gas. So I know we had that discussion, and I'm sorry to get back to you, but we, we've been working diligently to balance the budget, because it does require that. And the, looking at what the revenue expectations were for property taxes was one. Obviously, rolling back the millage rate, we had to go back and look and say, okay, we've got to cut some money out of here. And then we also go back and double-check again all of our revenue sources. We do, I think, a really good job, it's both a science and an art, but trying to estimate what the revenue is going to be for the, for the city. And the later, the later we wait in the year, is the more accurate budget for you to adopt.
Yes, Josh?
I think it just goes back to our discussion in, in July of, I'm indifferent, you know, whether that is the 90 days out, whether it's 60 days out, whether that's somewhere in between, but I think we do need to either change our standard operating procedure here in the city, or amend the charter at this point, you know, just, just so we are cohesive, because if it's in the charter, 90 days, 90 days, that's okay. If it's not standard operating procedure, then we need to amend the charter to what is actually realistic for our city staff to accomplish. If 90 days is not realistic, I completely understand. I'm in budget season right now, myself. I get it. The later data that we have, the better that I can make a 2025 fiscal year budget. But whatever that is, it's written in our city charter, and I think that we've, we've got to abide by our city charter. It's there for a reason, in my opinion. It's there, says 90 days, 90 days. You know, so if we need to amend that realistically, to make it reflect the actual workload on our city staff, then that's the avenue that we need to go, or change standard operating procedure.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate the input. Meg, yes?
If I could just reiterate, so you're saying that the budget, the presentation is the 15th of October, and the 21st it's available? So if it's, no?
No, we will, we'll send the advertisement to the newspaper, that's going on the, on the board of figures in the Sunday paper. 21st of October for public review, and for y'all's look at. And then the first, we try to get this thing adopted in November, that would then have the first public hearing on November 4th, and the second one on November 12th. But I'm available to sit down with each one of you, if you want to come in and talk through the budget. I'm willing to do that with Cindy, and if it's the capital improvement stuff, we can sit down and have Troy involved as well. Well, actually, it's not going to get me, because I'm going to go out of the country. But Cindy would be available, and Troy would be available at that particular time. I think one, one of the things I hadn't taken here.
All right, sounds good, and I would encourage everybody to take advantage of that opportunity, and that opportunity is always there. All you have to do is ask, and not everybody does, so. All right. Next, there's a whole list of other updates that we normally receive from you and I guess Troy, and do you want to go through?
Yeah.
Okay.
Y'all taking action on all these items? I think city manager report can be very long, and I'll do it tonight if you indulge me. First, we'll start with events. Avery tells me we have events taking place all 31 days in October. The Bowl and the Eagle Theater activated 29 of the 31 days in October. Some of the major events that, we had, on Friday night, we had the Sugar Hill gang in the theater, which was a highly, highly energized and concert, I think everybody who was there enjoyed it. The on-the-stage Children's Theater presents Something Rotten Jr. in the Eagle, coming up on, I think it's, had it here someplace, but, oh yeah, on October 11th and 12th. And then the free concert, which is the Friday night of Sugar Rush, is Gimme Springsteen and mixed tape. And then the Arts Festival is Saturday and Sunday, and we have sold out every booth that we had, we could have taken 50 to 60 more. So it continues to get bigger and bigger, and it's, I think the quality of vendors continues to improve as well. So we're real pleased with the vendor community embracing the festival, and that's why we, we had to go to a Sunday because of rain several years ago, and now we're doing Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, and there's always big crowds. So Trick or Treat on West Broad will be happening as well in October, and then we'll have the movie in the Bowl called Hotel Transylvania. Car shows in the Landing, and the Rocky Horror Picture Show's in the Eagle, and as you saw last past week, our last farmer's market for the season was last Tuesday, October 1st. I think that has been a wonderful addition to our offerings in downtown Sugar Hill and for the entire community. We're blessed with vendors who keep coming back, and we have others that want to come as well. Couple of construction updates and operational updates. The stream bank stabilization project at Percol Park is in the third week with mobilization, clearing, and erosion control being the major focus. And we were lucky enough, we dodged a major overbank flooding by about two feet during Hurricane Helene. Stream restoration project continues with some, but just little conflicts in the park, to the park patrons. I think, Meg, you asked about downtown striping. Because of the weather, we've had to delay that, but work is still being coordinated with the crews performing the handwork associated with the parking spaces, stop bars, and the other nonlinear tasks, primarily completed with vehicle-mounted striping equipment. Weather is, as I said, weather has hammered it, but we hope to get this scheduled soon, especially along Elton Tucker, and also want to do it on Temple. So that's what's going on with those two things. Speaking of budgets, Cindy and our customer service folks, Megan Lancaster, have worked together to get all of our documents, and I should say, our planning department as well, in terms of getting stormwater fee information to finance, is that we, the city property tax bills have been mailed, I know I've received mine. The bill includes real and personal property, as well as the 2024 stormwater fees. The due date's Friday, November 29th. Payments can be made online, mailed, or paid in person at the customer service window, and a vast majority of the property tax payments are done through several escrow companies, and so they just come in and batch-download our data, and then pay that way. In planning, we have concluded the interview process for our vacant planning and development director position. We had a great pool of applicants, including several internally, and after interviews and due diligence of checking references, we made an offer that has been accepted. New director is Artesias Art Newell. He started his local government career in Carroll County. As the zoning administrator, a position he held for 17, for 19 years, he then served as the planning director for Rome and Floyd County for six years. He spent a year in private sector consulting, is now really excited to be part of the team here at Sugar Hill. His first day will be, of the city will be Monday, October 21st. Artesias holds a bachelor's degree in geography and a master's degree in public administration from the University of West Georgia. He's very community-minded, serving on various volunteer boards in both Rome and Carrollton. I can tell you a little bit of information about him, hopefully you'll get to meet him here soon. In his spare time, he loves to spend time with his family and friends, traveling the country and abroad, and also is a, this is interesting, an avid roller coaster and amusement park enthusiast. So I hope he has insurance. He's also a huge sports fan, enjoying the Falcons, the Braves, the Atlanta United, and the University of West Georgia Wolves. When my, when my son went to school at Kennesaw State, they played West Georgia, but they were called the Braves then, but now they're called the Wolves. Even though his favorite team is not the Georgia Wild Dogs, we are looking forward to his leadership in our planning department, and his contributions to our management team, as well as to you and the community. I want to extend my thanks to all the great staff in the planning department that have shouldered a lot of new work since the departure of Kappa Wana. They've grown, and we are lucky, lucky to have them on our team. Recreation, Andy's not here tonight, recreation, as you saw when he came in, in the back, the ice tent has been installed, ice rink tent has been installed, the rain construction will begin right after Sugar Rush, and will be open November 8th through February 16th. Sports are in full swing, both at the parks and at the East Center, soccer, football, and flag football at the park, I-9 basketball and adult basketball leagues are also up and running in the East Center. Andy tells me we now have almost 22,000 East Center members, 21,985 to be exact. Both the golf course and our parks fared well during Hurricane Helene. Cleanup efforts were swift and safe, allowing us to keep both closed for the shortest possible times. Halloween decorations are up at the Eagle Theater, as you noticed, but as soon as they are removed, the holiday season decorations throughout downtown will begin installation. In public safety, they continue to patrol residential and business areas of the city. They had like 1,250 checks this past month. They patrol and provide visible presence downtown during the evening hours to maintain our family-friendly atmosphere. They also receive and respond to multiple calls of requiring police assistance. They responded and coordinated with Gwinnett County Police Department to handle traffic complaints, noise complaints, suspicious person calls, accidents, juvenile complaints, trespassing, domestic violence, and stranded motorists. A total of 1,590 activities were logged into the daily reports. You know, if we continue to monitor illegal parking, and we are citing for that, and we just completed the onboarding process for two new marshals, Marcia Mia Santorin and Elizar Andrade, these two new hires bring the department back up to full staff. And our reserve marshals logged 85 hours of volunteer service during the month of October. You probably hear about our, a lot of our marshals, particularly one, Marshal Sanford, that is well-known in the community, at the schools, in downtown, and about, out and about, but they conducted 12 outreach and community policing activities. They did conduct an active shooter lockdown drills with all the schools, with They did conduct an active shooter lockdown drills with all the schools within the linear cluster. And as I said, Marshal Parker, Marshal Sanford attended several events at Sugar Hill Elementary, White Oak Elementary, and Sycamore Elementary, and Benton House. And they also were present during the grandparents' day at Sycamore Elementary. We believe in training, in continuous learning for all of our staff. Chief King and Marshal Ritter attended an internal affairs investigation course, and Deputy Chief Smith attended a human trafficking conference and completed active shooter prevention and active shooter response training. So our staff has been busy training, being in the community. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Paul. I also want to just add, it's my understanding that all the disc golf signage has been put up, and I think people have actually been playing in the course. I see lots of positive posts from people all over that are enjoying the course. And so I know Andy would want us to mention that as well, because his team, they put a lot of effort themselves into doing the construction, so.
I think we, I believe we included a photo of hole number three in Friday's report. So, yeah, it's looking, looking good. And you're right, it's being used well before it was even open.
And I'll also just ask, I've actually had a Boy Scout group reach out to me, Cub Scout PAC 513. And there's something now related to a badge that's, it's recreation, they can use disc golf as one of the group activities. And they would love for us to, to do kind of like an inaugural disc golf throw. I don't know the right terminology because I don't, I don't really do disc golf, but just, I'll just put that out there for, for consideration. All right. So we are finished with the agenda, and I'm not aware of a need to go into executive session, and Troy's not with us tonight. And so I'll just entertain a motion to adjourn our work session if there, if there is a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion from Gary. Is there a second? Second from Josh. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. We are adjourned until next Monday night at 7:30.